Okay, we are back into open session on our Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 meeting. And right now, we have a public hearing. We have two Board of Health variances. The first one is 28 Huron Ave and the second one is 36 Huron Ave. And Tim, can you tell me who is here?
I can.
For the 28 Huron Ave.
All right. Mr. Gottwald, are you on the line?
Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, perfect. So Mr. Gottwald is the engineer on the project. We also have some members of the public here as well. Let me just make sure I'm including everybody in. One of them, I'm not sure if it was 28 or 36, Mr. Gottwald, you can just let me know. We had a posting issue. He did bring the postings directly to the residents. And I have some certifications in my email about that. So I don't know if you guys want to continue that public hearing or if you want to continue as planned.
Mr. Gottwald, do you have right now the green cards for 28 Huron Ave?
I do.
Can you read those out loud, please?
Um. Hold on one second. What do you want me, what do you want to know who I sent them to?
Yes, that has to be made aware for public record, please.
Sure. Sure. I sent them to Brian and Teresa Anderson. And Arthur and Janet Morin, Marin.
Yep. Okay, Tim, are any of those people here?
If you, if anyone wants to unmute themselves, it's star six on your phones. If you're one of those Butters, if you could just let yourself be known.
So are the Morins or the Andersons here? Okay, is Mr. Hutchins here? Okay, um, Mr. Gottwald, do you want to go forward and let us know exactly what you're working on, please?
Sure. It's a septic repair. I don't know if you all have the plan, able to see the plan. But it's a very small lot. Actually, it, it, Huron Ave actually cuts between, one side of the lot is on one side of Huron Ave, another piece of the lot is on the other side. So we're putting in new leaching area. And there is really only one place for it to go. And in order to put it there, we need all these local upgrade approvals, mostly setbacks from property lines, a couple from the abutting wells. And those are the neighbors that were notified. It is essentially in the same position as what's there right now. It, it might be a couple feet closer to a well, in fact, a couple feet further away from another well. But it's, it's really the only place it can fit to meet all the setbacks in that area.
Okay, so right now, I'm just going to go over the setbacks that you have listed. So we know exactly what we're talking about. Number one, allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from the cellar wall from 20 feet to 12 feet. Allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from the property line from 10 feet to 5 feet. Allow reduction of required number of deep holes from 2 to 1 as per 310 chapter, whatever. Number four, allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from the surface water supply from 400 feet to 85. And allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from existing private wells from 100 to 75 and 95 onset wells in 81 to 32 Huron as per chapter general law. Granting these five waivers will allow the applicant to repair the existing failed system with the Title V compliance septic system. No increase of flow is proposed and there will be no additions to the household, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I'll make a statement after we're done this. Does anybody have any questions?
Is Tanya on the line here with us? Lisa?
Yes, she is.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that, Tanya?
She's gonna, star six?
Nope, she's on her phone.
Oh.
Oops.
Hi.
There we go.
Hi.
My first day and I couldn't get my computers to work.
Have you? Thank you, Tanya. Have you had a chance to look these over?
Yes, I certainly did. I was able to do a quick site visit this afternoon and also started looking at the plans. And so I do have some, some concerns about the sites. To me, in my opinion only, groundwater issues, wetland issues, and long pond in the rear of the site. You kind of like have a trifecta as far as priority variances here. And I'm just starting to get my bearings as it relates to Free Town's rules and regulations. And of course, the Title V, which we do have here, which the engineer is aptly complied with. I'm siding a little bit more towards more information regarding the private well is downgrading of his proposed. And yes, the engineer is absolutely right. It's a very challenging site, both of these sites. Like I said, they have almost everything going on. We not only just have groundwater, but we have models at 5 feet down, which tells me a different story. I'm more looking at a little bit of alternative technology because of our groundwater supply, because of portable water supply, and because of long pond in the rear. So those are just a few of my comments. And I defer to the board right now, but I have tried to take a quick look at it.
No, I truly appreciate that. While you're looking at this, I know that we have done other septic repairs in that general area because of the floods that we had a while back. So that took a significant toll on that area, which is one of the reasons why we're still working on some of these septics. So I would, I would like for you to just maybe take a look at some of the things that they had done and some of the things that were approved by the board, so then that way you can get acclimated to that. I really do not mind. I'll throw it to the rest of the board. Waiting on this, I have a real, I'd also like to find a way to streamline some of this. Like maybe there should be a cover sheet where you also agree or disagree or things for us to look at. Because it is so hard to do a public hearing in this format and not, not see people and residents to ask questions and to not even have like the, I don't know if the other applicant is here. Sorry, it's really, really difficult. Anyway, carry on to the board if they have any questions.
Do we want to postpone voting on this? That would be my suggestion also. So is that what you're? Go ahead, Travis.
No, I'm sorry. This is Bill Gottwald, the engineer. I just wanted to say, address here agents a couple of issues. We've already been through conservation. We've, we've done that. We've got approved with them. As far as the water table separation, we meet. I'm not asking for a variance on groundwater elevations. I understand it's close to, to a lot of things, but it is no closer than what is there right now. What is there right now is not working properly. It has to be fixed. These homeowners, both of them have, you know, these plans were done a few months ago. And just, just because COVID, it kind of got dragged on. So I'm not sure what else. If somebody can tell me, there's really nowhere else to put the thing in this. I'm not sure what else you can, you can do to change what's there right now, quite honestly. It, you know, Title V is 100 feet from a well. It's 81 feet from the abutting well. It's essentially that right now. It might be, it might be 78, 79, but it's essentially the same distance. So like I said, I'm not sure what else to. By delaying it, I'm not sure what you're going to solve. We're going to come back and do the same thing.
If the board wanted further comments, I'm here for you. I did have further, but it's only the board. I just want to make sure that I address the board properly.
Absolutely. And we totally appreciate that. It is, it is difficult on both sides, right? Tanya just came into this, kind of threw this in her lap today. This actually is dated October 3rd, 2020, so it has been some time. COVID has really wreaked havoc on these properties as well. Again, there have been other issues in that area that have been taken care of. I feel a little, I didn't know conservation had already signed off on this. I feel a little bit more, I feel better about that. So I'll leave it up to the board. What's your pleasure?
Yeah, that's part of the reason why it's, it's coming to you now. We were asked to go through conservation and get their approval first. I mean, this started with Derek doing some perks and then on, on the next one, and Mary did the perks on this one. So, you know.
Yeah, it will improve the situation there. This is what I kind of, right? It's like, it's going to improve the situation. We would not, if it's a new build, we obviously, you know, it'd be a very different set of circumstances. But like, what are we supposed to do? And I mean, you gotta have sympathy for the homeowner here in this situation.
So I will entertain a motion to allow this to go forward with the five restrictions as designated and as I read prior. So I'll entertain that motion.
Motion granted?
Do I have a second? All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay.
So I need to do the roll call vote.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Sluck and Matthews?
Yes.
Sluck and Pacheco?
Yes.
And Sluck and Grunwald?
Abstained.
I do think that there is, there could be a better way to go about this, especially during COVID. And I, I am welcome all of Tanya's insight into these. And anything that you can bring forward to us and enlighten us would be well welcomed, well welcomed, welcomed, anyway. Um, all right.
Can I just make one more point here? This is Bill, the engineer. You're probably well aware, but I know the residents have got together and they're, they're looking to do some roadwork there and repave that road in the spring. They were trying to get it done in the fall. And I guess it's going to happen in the spring. I don't know if it's gone before, you know. I know it's gone through the, a few other places in the town. So, so what they want to do is fix their, their septic systems and then hopefully upgrade the road. They're going to put a little bit of type of drainage in there or something also to improve whatever problems they have now. So just, just to let you know, that's all.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
The only thing I'd like to add to all this is this is a situation that is recurrent. That whole area is problematic. And I think we should at least look into bringing city water to that area. Because sooner or later, that is going to be absolutely required. So I don't know if we want to entertain a discussion on that. But that would be my recommendation right now. To just keep putting Band-Aids on this is not a good solution as far as I can see.
I think that having a conversation with the water sewer department is probably a good thing to have sooner rather than later.
And we may want to have some communications with the residents of that area and see what, what their wishes may be. Because whatever we do is going to be expensive if we do anything. And I don't know if that's something these people would want to entertain or not. Might be nice to know.
I agree. Um, maybe, maybe we can reach out to, maybe Tim can write something, sorry, Tim, that maybe we can disperse to them or, but let's, let's work on that. Between Peter and Tim, I think they can put their head together and come up with something for us.
We actually already, George had already asked me to write to the Blarren Sewer Commission about running a water line down this area. I do have that, a response from them. So I'll make sure the board gets a copy of that.
All right, thank you so much.
But, Tim, did we just agree to contact the residents also? The water commissioner is one thing, but the residents are another.
How about we'll put this on the future agenda, because that's kind of off the current agenda a little bit.
All right, um, the next thing we have is 36 Huron Ave, same thing, Mr. Gottwald, do you have any of the green cards, please?
Yes, as Tim was saying on this, I had mailed them out. And apparently, they have seven variances on this one. So it required a second page and the second page had the, the time and date. So apparently that didn't get mailed. I was made aware of it and I went to the two of Butters last Tuesday. And got, I spoke to both of them, went over the plan, and they, they both signed that they were aware of the meeting. And I passed them on to Tim. So, but their names, Munier, M U N U I E R, and then Joseph Zajak across the street. He has two properties.
Okay.
And they're, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is Joe or Kerry Zajak on the line?
Once again, stars, it's star six if anyone needs to unmute themselves.
And are any of the Muners on the line? Okay, no. All right, this one, do you want to talk about it, Mr. Gottwald? Or do you want me to go forward and read?
Yeah, I can give you a quick thing. This is very similar. The only difference I can say is here is this is up at a higher elevation. So there was, you know, although we met the water table separation, the other one, this one is up even higher. But it is, and there's, there's no wetland impact, but everything else is the same as before. We're replacing the system right now. It's, it's not working properly. And the gentleman just wants to get it taken care of. Same type of, you can read them or I can read them, the same type of variance request, mostly from the building, from the property line. And in this, so.
For the record, we should read them. So allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from the cellar wall from 20 feet to 10 feet. Allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from the property line 10 feet to 6 feet. Allow reduction of required setback distance from the cellar wall from 10 to 7. Allow reduction of required septic tank setback distance from property line 10 to 6. Allow reduction of required number of deep holes from 2 to 1. Allow reduction of SAS setback distance from surface water supply 400 to 100 feet. And allow reduction of required SAS setback distance from existing private wells from 100, 100 feet to 31 onsite well, 72 feet from number 37 and 78 feet from number 38. Granting these waivers will allow the applicant to repair the existing failed system with five new Title V compliant septic system, no increase of flow proposed. No, no additional bedrooms and no additional household numbers, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and also, was this sent to the conservation commission as well?
Yes, yep. These were both the same evening, about two weeks, two or three weeks ago, we had hearing on both of them. So I have got sign off from them on both of them.
Okay, and did Mary do, did Mary work on these as well?
As far as I know, well, Derek did this perk, but I think Mary looked at both plans, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Before we move to a motion, Lisa, can we get Tanya's input on this?
Sure, absolutely. Sorry, George.
Yeah, Mary had left a memo regarding annual testing for surface water concerns with the testing of the wells and surface water. Again, I have a different process of reviewing that. I'll refrain from getting into point. But she did make some notes and it was her alert me to reviewing these files. That was in what she had left me this morning when I first arrived in. So that's kind of why I went out to do the site visit, tried to start reviewing during these, these two applications.
So, so Tanya, in looking at her notes, because I just, I just actually peeked at them as well. It looks as though she said, request annual testing on number six?
For both of them, both, both number 28, and I'm sorry, but both 28 and 36, I didn't want to interrupt the board. Both have their annual testing of surface water body. They're both connected to variances, which is allowing the reduction of the SAS setback from the surface water supply from 400 feet to 85 feet, which is for 28. And then 36, different delineation for numbers. Sometimes when we see variances get approved, there are conditions that the board can put on, which I'm fairly aware of. It's always good to protect ourselves by putting in some of these conditions, which are pending upon approval of, of the board, the variances.
Correct. So I just want to make sure I understand. She, she recommends, and I'm assuming that you also do, request annual testing of number six and number seven and the neighbor's well and the surface water body of number six, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be for 36 Huron and will amend number 28 to include the request of annual testing of surface water body on number four and number five, reduction of setback at private wells of onsite. Okay, so we'll, we'll make, we'll make a motion to, you know, add that to number 28. But right now, we'll vote on number 36 with those recommendations set forth.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay.
Sluck and Matthews?
Yes.
Sluck and Grunwald?
Abstained.
And Sluck and Pacheco?
Yes. Also, I'll entertain a motion to add to number 28 as requested by the Board of Health, annual testing of surface water body and reduction of setback at private wells.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstained?
Sluck and Matthews?
Yes.
Sluck and Grunwald?
Abstained.
And Sluck and Pacheco?
Yes. Tanya, if you could find, I know we're supposed to be talking about your goals later. One of my goals for you would be to try to streamline some of this in working with the engineer before it comes forward and make distinct recommendations so that the board is very well aware of how you feel about things. And I know that you will do that.
I will. First, the first day.
Yay, welcome aboard. All right, so we'll close that public hearing. And we are now going to go into a public hearing to read the petition submitted by Verizon, New England Inc., and Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource Energy to request permission to relocate three poles, poles 11-22, 11-20, and 11-20F on Brayley Road in conjunction with the railroad improvements by CSX Transportation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, motion granted?
Do I have a second? All right, anybody here from the public? Okay.
Yes, hello.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Ross Bollito. I'm representing Verizon, New England.
How are you?
Not bad.
Okay, so go ahead.
Would you like me to read the petition?
I did, but you can read it again.
Okay, well, well, just like you, like you already said, we're looking to move three poles along Brayley Road. This is to accommodate the railroad project happening in that area. I believe that this came up before you guys sometime last year. I could be wrong. But the designer did ask that we move several of these poles. Some additional movement, a little further down the road. Maybe another 10 or 13 feet from where they originally wanted them before. So we're just re-petitioning to have those positions granted.
All right, and no impact on the neighborhood, correct?
Um, no.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you want to give the public another comment, a chance to comment after Mr. Millidou?
Um, anybody from the, anybody from the public?
Anyone called in would like to comment at star six, unmute yourself, or you could use the facilities on the Zoom app? No? All right.
All right. Hearing none.
Go ahead, you can call the vote again.
Hearing none. All those in favor? I think I did that already.
You did.
Okay.
I just got to do the roll call. Sluck and Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluck and Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluck and Pacheco?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
No worries. I'll ask the board, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Verizon.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. I'll ask the board if they don't mind skipping right to the Board of Health. So Tanya can go read up on some more health variances and Lori can just keep, continue working on her COVID-19 pandemic. So I'll turn it over to the Board of Health. George?
Well, I thought you were asking Tanya. Sorry about that. I don't have any of the updates, sorry.
Okay, so Lori Dismaris is here to bring the town up to date on the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact on the town of Free Town, how the numbers are going, what we're looking at. If she's still treading water, if she feels like she's gaining ground here and the anticipation of the vaccine and what we can see locally. So Lori, if you could bring the board up to speed on things, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Lisa. So just to kind of give an update, as far as COVID-19 cases for the town of Free Town. So since the beginning, our first case that we had in Free Town was back on, actually St. Patrick's Day. So we're coming up on, obviously on a year. We have had a total of 656 cases since the beginning. We currently have 105 active cases. Obviously, 551 have recovered. Since the beginning, total deaths for the town of Free Town have been five. And as of today, total hospitalizations have been 26. Also, obviously, contact tracing, the cases obviously have been quite an increase through the summer months, you know, June, we only had 11 cases, July was 12, August was six, I'm sorry, was six. September was 13. October started to increase at 31. That's when I had gone and asking for assistance as far as doing some contact tracing. And thank you to the board. We had hired Deb, Ally, and Sophia to help me out with the contact tracing. And since they've come on board, cases in November have been 100. And cases in December have been 244. And so far in January, as of today, we're up to 164. So we, obviously, the surge that Massachusetts is seeing, we're also seeing that here in Free Town. So thank you for the help. There are still tons of cases. It is difficult to follow all, everyone. We do still send some cases to the state, to the community contact tracers. And they've been, you know, but I feel that, you know, with us doing it here in town, better connection. But sometimes some of them do have to end up going to the state because there's just not enough time for all of us. Does anyone have any questions regarding cases or investigation?
George, Trevor?
When it comes to vaccines, right, would there, is there any chance we'll be administering vaccines like locally in town? Or is that going to be, you know, going, I know Gillette just set up a vaccine. Is that how our people in town will go?
So I am currently working with the fire chief, Gary Sylvia. And we've been working on bringing COVID vaccines to Free Town. So him and I have been working closely together, kind of getting all the different things in place. There's different Um, there's different, um, agreements that we have to have signed. Um, I did touch base with our town doctor, Dr. Levo. Um, so he's been up to date, um, so that we can move forward because we do have to have a physician who, um, does sign for the vaccines. We are also looking at, um, I have a, I had call up to the state today regarding refrigerators. We don't have pharmaceutical grade refrigerators, so that's something, um, just checking. Sometimes they've mentioned that we could use, uh, you know, the regular refrigerators as long as we're monitoring temperatures. So I do have a call up for that. That may be something I have to come to the board for if we do have to purchase. Um, and I know we could probably use the CARES money, um, purchase either freezers or, and/or, um, refrigerators for the vaccine going forward. I also touched base with, um, Kim, the town accountant, um, as far as there is a way you can, um, do billing as far as administrative fees for vaccinations. So that would also help, um, defer some of the cost with staffing these clinics. So I did talk to Kim today, um, and she's going to be looking into that also.
All right. Well, great. And just want to say again, we really appreciate all your hard work and, you know, I've done an amazing job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Lori, are you going to be looking for, um, local, um, volunteers for the, obviously, people that are, you know, do this for a living, um, for the administration of shots or? How's that going to work?
So I think, um, so obviously we will have to be looking for volunteers or people to help out. Um, the state has given, uh, waivers so that paramedics and also, which is new this, this time around, EMTs can also administer vaccines. So obviously we have to do some training with them. Um, and then nurses. I know I've, I've been in touch with the school nurses. Obviously, we've been working really closely together as far as with COVID cases in the school. Um, so they also have all said that they would be willing to help out. Um, and I know, you know, different people have been reaching out. So I think going forward, once we come up with a plan, um, obviously we could reach out to people who are, you know, medical staff, physicians, nurses, um, who'd be willing to help out with that.
Um, and do you have a location? Are you still working on logistics?
So we're still working a little bit on that. We kind of had looked at, um, we're still trying to figure out whether or not we're going to do, um, regional with Free Town and Lakeville because obviously I'm the public health nurse for both towns. Um, we had looked at the high school. The high school had a very good setup, um, can accommodate a lot of people. We're trying to figure out, you know, do we want to do a drive-through style or, um, you know, bring people into the building? I recently, um, last week in the town of Marion, I did, um, two, I did the first responders clinics for COVID vaccine. Um, and we did the drive-through style. So I'm very familiar with that. But also we could do something, um, you know, in the building. I know in talking with the chief, um, obviously our EDS site that we've had, um, is the elementary school. So that's also an option. I know that in two thousand nine, um, that was used for the H one and one. So obviously that had worked and had been successful. So that's also another plan. You know, another option that we can do going in with the school, um, and doing that piece.
Uh, on the vaccinations, have you considered, uh, letting people make appointments rather than having long lines out there?
Yes, actually, um, the state had purchased a program. It's called Prep Mod. Um, and it just got launched, um, less than a month ago. I'd use it at the clinic that I did. Um, and it's actually a really good system. You, everyone can go into the system. They make appointments. You can schedule, um, you know, how long your clinic's going to be, how many vaccinated you have, and it allows people to go in. So yes, it definitely, um, makes it so that people aren't waiting in long lines. You can set it how often you want your appointments to be, um, and it actually is a really good system. It actually will, they can register in there. They can, um, fill out the screening form in the Prep Mod. And then it also gets reported, you're required whenever you give a vaccine, it has to be reported to, um, the Massachusetts immunization system, um, and that has to be done within, for COVID, within seventy-two hours. Prep Mod automatically does that. So, um, it is a really, actually a really good system, um, and very user-friendly.
Do we have a priority list for people to get the vaccine?
So on the mass.gov site, um, they, every Tuesdays and Thursdays, they do update the priority list. Obviously, right now they're in the phase one. Um, right now they're on first responders, they're moving into congregate settings and then into home-based, um, home care agencies. Um, where I think that Free Town, um, would start, um, potentially start with, um, giving COVID vaccines would be in phase two. And the first part of phase two is anyone seventy-five and older and, um, people with two or more comorbidities. So I think that's where we potentially would start picking it up, um, as far as helping out our citizens here in town.
Do you have a start date in mind yet?
I do not. Um, and the state, this is all based upon when the state is rolling out the vaccine. They're the ones who let us know when we can keep moving into different phases. Um, right now they're keeping us into first responders and congregate settings. So they're the ones who kind of dictate when, um, obviously if you look on mass.gov, you know, they're kind of talking about, you know, phase two isn't until maybe like March or so, somewhere in there. Um, but it all depends on the state getting the vaccine and then sending it out and saying who can get it. So we actually don't dictate when we can start. It's actually where the state, when they're able to let us know and the vaccine is, um, available for that group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we using Pfizer or Moderna?
So I would imagine that we'd be using Moderna. Um, the Pfizer vaccine, when that comes, it has to be in shipments of, um, seven hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred and seventy-five at a time, and that requires the ultra cold storage. Um, what the state has been kind of doing with, um, you know, smaller groups, um, what I'm familiar with, what I use at my first responder clinics is the Moderna. Um, and those come in shipments of a hundred vaccine, hundred doses at a time in a, in a box. Um, and those are a little bit easier to store. You can store them in the freezer, um, up till their expiration date, which I think is probably sometime in July. Um, and then you, when you move them into the refrigerator, they're good up for up to thirty days. So those are a little bit easier to, um, manage as far as not having any special, um, you know, ultra cold storage and dry ice and things like that. So hopefully that would be the vaccine that we would get and wouldn't require as much, um, on our part as far as storage.
Thank you. Um, as a professional, um, in your opinion, can you tell me if these vaccines are safe, please?
So obviously they've been, um, you know, they've gone through, um, FDA approval. Um, you know, they're under the emergency, um, agreement. Um, you know, obviously they've had many people that have been getting the vaccines. They are safe. Um, you know, people, there are some people that have some side effects. Um, all vaccines obviously have side effects. Um, they're still learning about the vaccine. I got mine, um, you know, so, um, last week or the week before. So I do recommend that everyone get the vaccine, you know, when it becomes available.
Thank you. I have two more questions. Um, do you see the cases continuing to rise? Slash, are you, uh, do we, I know there's only one case of the other strand, and that was from Boston, from somebody that had visited the UK. Um, but do you see us continuing to rise? Or do you see, um, I, I know that right now is only one sixty-four. That's a decline from, uh, from December. But are we still in the phase of the, you know, of January break? Or are we, are we seeing that right now?
Right now, um, I'm still seeing the cases climb. The one sixty-four is so far this month, and obviously we still have ten more days. Um, literally each day, there are tons of cases that are coming in. Um, so, you know, obviously we did see this, see a spike around the holidays. Um, I'm not really sure if we're kind of seeing still a little bit more from that. Um, have seen more recently, um, kind of when it gets into a home, um, it almost seems like it goes through everyone in the household. So, um, you know, that's also what we're kind of seeing with increasing cases. But I think it might be a little bit longer before, I think January still will be increased. And then hopefully, um, you know, come February, they'll get better.
All right. And I'm sure you're still urging people to make sure that they wear masks, wash their hands and sanitize, correct?
That is correct. Um, the recommendations are, nothing has changed. So even though the vaccine is available and there are people getting the vaccine, they are stressing that even if you get the vaccine, um, you still are required to wear your mask. Um, there's, so all that's in place, wearing your mask, hand washing, um, the social distancing. And even though someone gets a vaccine, even if you've had two, um, they still need to continue on with, um, carrying out that. So yes, um, anytime you're in public, you need to be wearing a mask.
All right. Thank you. Lori, I can't thank you enough. I know that you've been underwater. Lori is not only the town nurse for Free Town, but she does a couple of municipalities. So, um, I know how much you're working. I don't even know if you're sleeping yet. Um, I hope that the people, um, are really helping you, Debbie, Ally and Sophia. I hope that they are helping you. Um, if you need anything else, um, you know, we're more than happy to help. Um, I really appreciate you coming and giving us an update. I'd like to hear from you. Maybe, you know, every couple of weeks. I think it's important, especially as we start to roll out the vaccinations. I think it's good for everybody to know. And I, I think that it's good for townspeople to, to know what we're working on, what you're working on, what you're bringing to the table and how important it is to get vaccinated once they roll out. Um, and again, continue, especially when you're indoors, um, and you're walking around hallways and, and the such. And, um, you know, that you're wearing a mask and you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. So I totally appreciate it. I'll leave it to the board for any other questions.
All set. Totally. Thank you, Lori.
George, all set?
All set. Thank you.
All right. Tanya, do you have any questions for Lori?
No, I don't. I just, I am here for her for support. She has another ally now and we met today. Very impressed. So I'm here for you, Lori, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I look forward to, I'm glad to meet you today and look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you so much, Lori. Um, and I think that, you know, we should continue to reach out to Lori and get updates. Um, I, I'm hoping the board is, uh, open to that.
I think this was awesome. This is, you know, very informative and, you know, I think this is definitely important for us to do. So I totally agree.
All right. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye.
On the next item, Lisa.
Yep.
The goals, uh, can we put that off until the next meeting? I would really like to sit down with Tanya and discuss that.
Sure. Um, Tanya, do you have anything for the board that you would like to talk about right now?
No, I'm up for talking with the board however you see, however you see fit. Um, if there's anything that you would like to, uh, bring forth right now, I'm, I'm all ears. And, um, I'm excited to be here and be of service.
All right. Well, basically I think you heard from me, but, um, I'm sure you'll sit down with George and he'll have some more for you. But I really just want to be able to streamline some of these, um, Board of Health variances. Some do not have to come in front of the board. I'd like to continue to do that, but at least get a monthly report on what you have approved. Um, there are some that definitely have to come in front of the board. But if it were more, uh, again streamlined and with definitive, um, recommendations from you, it would really help us out a lot.
Uh, would it be helpful to start preparing some of these memos for you, um, to start breaking down? There's, uh, how I review and, and my explanation of things. Um, just would that be helpful? I guess I'm looking for as much input as you can, uh, Madam Pacheco, so I can, you know, look, look forward to how you want those streamlined. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm old, the madam.
I'm sorry. That's what I do with other boards.
This is a bad night all the way around.
It's a respect.
Lisa is good. I'm good with that. Um, no, no, I, I do, I, I think it is important that we all know how you approach things. Um, but it doesn't have to be like a big thing. I, I just, I'd like to know how you approach things and how you look at things. Um, and then any help that you need from us, I, I think that that, you know, it's a two-way street, right?
Right. Okay.
All right. Trevor?
I totally agree.
All right. Thank you so much for everything tonight. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing on with our Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, number four, agreement for septic betterment loan for seventy-four county road. Did everybody have a chance to read that over?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that? It's, um, for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's a five percent payback on taxes. It's a twenty-year. Um, it's over a twenty-year period. There is a lien on the home. I, you know, um, so we do have, uh, protect, the town has protection. We have been doing this for a while and there is enough money in the betterment account to cover this. So with that, I would, um, I would entertain a motion to approve in format. Um, because there are some other things that have to go into this. Um, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to agree.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And select him Pacheco.
Yes. Um, I'm going to skip number five and go right to number six for now. Um, ambulance abatement and write-off for the month of December, twenty twenty. Um, for the total amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And select him Pacheco.
Yes. Um, you want us to hold on the minutes, correct?
Yes. I forgot to update that on the posting, so.
Nope, no worries. All right. We're going to hold on the minutes. I'm going to go right to number nine for now. Update to Board of Selectmen's for very meeting schedule.
Uh, that one, uh, one of our board members is actually going to be out of town for the next couple of weeks. Uh, so they're not going to be available on February first. Uh, so we're just looking to push the couple, couple of meetings off. Uh, so instead of meeting February first, we'll meet February eighth. And instead of the sixteenth, we'll meet the twenty-second. Is that all right with everybody else? All right. So minor fix.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll go, um, into goals for the town administrator.
So for this one, Lisa actually had sent over her goals this afternoon. Uh, let me just pull that up here. Uh, so, uh, Georges and Trevors are combined in a document in your packet. Uh, but Lisa's goals that she had sent to me, uh, was to acclimate yourself with each department, board or committee. Uh, set department head meetings and set time with, to meet with individual employees and review all contracts in anticipation for negotiations. Did you also want me to read the rest of the, the goals from the rest of the board?
I, I just don't want him to get overwhelmed with like fifteen goals, so.
Right. It's bear with me just a moment here. Goals.
We're at ten right now.
We also have, uh, from submitted by Trevor, develop an internal survey to document and track town employee satisfaction. Uh, reduce year-over-year turnover outside of retirements. Uh, explore grants to help bring sewer down Main Street to a sonnet, or in a sonnet rather, and increase public-private partnerships with local businesses here in town. And then George had submitted a few of them. Sixty days to evaluate processes in town hall and highway departments. Uh, report to Board of Selectmen what should be addressed from the evaluation of processes from town hall and highway department. And also agree on what changes or improvements need to be implemented and a, uh, and a timeline to put them in place regarding the processes at town hall and highway department. So I think Georges might be a somewhat similar.
Department committees and boards, right? Because he needs to figure out how that all works before he can jump in. And then by meeting with each individual employee and department head on a one-on-one meeting, he'll be able, he'll be better able to assess each department to make recommendations, um, on changes that, that he could make. Um, but I think that they all kind of work together. Um, you know, the two big things right now, obviously, are contracts for, um, preparation for negotiations. I, I know that we'll all be working together on that. Um, and, um, also the, uh, the sewer line is actually being worked on. Um, but when he meets with the Economic Development Board, he'll be able to understand all of that. So I, I think it is all a big learning curve and I think it'll all come together. Peter, do you have any input?
No, I'm, I'm good with it. Just, I mean, I'll sit down with, uh, George and get a little more insight of what he's looking for. But, yeah, I think it's just getting my feet wet and meeting everyone and getting them. That's what I'm working on.
All right. George, you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Trevor?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Um, and then I'll go right to town administrator's report if you have one right now.
Uh, before we do that, do you guys want me to put that, all of these goals into one document for everyone to sign or just kind of? Uh, before we do that, do you guys want me to put that, all of these goals into one document for everyone to sign, or just kind of memorialize that kind of thing?
Yeah, that.
I, I just don't know if the board and want, you know, to sign it and then have you sign it, or if you just want like an internal list kind of thing.
So I think that if you make a heading and then put subheadings underneath of what goes with what will be, you know what I mean? It'll, it'll look neater than just like, I don't know, twelve line items. You know what I mean? I think you can streamline some of them, because some of them are close, really close.
I'll put that together then.
And then we can sign off on it.
Yeah, also, like I, my, my, like, reduce year-over-year turnover, like, we need, I need to know the kind of a metric. I didn't establish a metric to measure that, which I, like, so that's kind of, it might not be a fair kind of thing, so um, we might want to strike that, or maybe reword how, how we say that, how I say that, you know?
Because no one's gonna leave now.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry. Um, but you know, I, you know, I, I agree. I think, you know, we started to do exit interviews, you know, um, sometimes they help, um, but sometimes we never got to read them, so we didn't really know exactly. But I, I think that, I, I think once he meets with departments and stuff, he'll be able to like say, oh, okay, this is, this got to change, or this is, it works better if we do it this way, you know? Um, so, I agree.
Okay.
All right, so town administrators' report.
I had three quick things. I attended online the, uh, FOMIA, the Police Liability and Law Update for Two Thousand Twenty-One, just to get an idea of what's happening in Massachusetts and, uh, since the pandemic. So I, it was just really a refresher of what's going on. Um, got a couple of security, uh, security chemicals, putting that together in a memo, should send to that to attempt to have in the next meeting on that. And just the RFP for the trash recycling, um, probably eighty-five percent done by comparison, and I should have that for you for next, next time to look at it, at least.
Perfect, that sounds, that's awesome.
Luann and Tim's been very helpful on both of those projects, so I appreciate that.
Perfect. Um, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I'll turn it over to Personnel Board.
Okay. So, uh, first, we have a formation. Of course, as soon as I start to talk, my dog freaks out. We have the, uh, oh, one second. I'm, I'm gonna give him a treat. I'll be right back.
It's so funny how we coddle to these little animals on four legs. Hey, what about that Tom Brady, huh?
That's a dirty word in my house right now. You're not allowed to say that.
But it's like, it's a love-hate thing, right? It's like, but then you're so happy for him, so I get it, totally get it.
There's any happiness in my home. I hope they don't hear you.
I apologize, guys. I took a tree and threw it outside, so I think the dog should be happy now.
He's in the neighbor's house now.
The tree's gone.
I have an electric fence, so.
All right, go ahead, Trav.
So this is the formation of the, um, of the Free Town Pantry Committee. Free Town Town Pantry Committee. So, um, I know this, Lisa, is something that you've been working on, and, um, you want, if you want to talk about it a little bit more, and, you know, who we plan on.
It's just, um, in order to make it official, we should probably have a committee, um, then that way, um, you know, it's a town-run operation, and that's the use of the old police station. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that it, it's, you know, up and up, not, not, um, it's done the right way, that's all. So, um, without hesitation, I'll make, um, a motion to, uh, as to the formation of the Free Town Town Pantry Committee.
One second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slakman Grunwald?
Yes.
Slakman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Slakman Matthews?
Yes.
Should I be advertising for people to join that, or are we gonna limit it to just the people that are involved, or it's of right now to start?
Um, I mean, anybody, we're always gonna take volunteers, right? Because it's never gonna run without enough volunteers, but I think it does take a core committee to make sure and ensure that things run appropriately and right. So sure, if anybody, uh, has an interest, um, or value that wants to come forward, um, I know that Craig Braw, myself, I'm Gene Fox, um, you know, are, are three people, individuals right now that want to be on the committee. Um, I know that, uh, also, Craig had indicated that he knew a couple of other members that wanted to, so, um, you know, I'm never gonna say no to people that want to volunteer or help or be on a committee. I have no, no issues about that. It's, it's gonna take a lot of work, so anybody that would be interested, probably just send a, a letter of interest to Town Hall, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have the delegation of change of status forms to the town administrator. So previously, um, we made this change, and it was specific to our former town administrator. So I think what we need to do here today is to make it more, um, broad, to have this designation, um, to the town administrator in general. Is that a fair explanation of this?
It should be.
I, I'll make a motion to delegate the change of status forms to the town administrator for approval.
Uh, can you just explain to me what this is? I don't really understand it.
Yep, the change of status forms is, uh, basically an internal document that we use, uh, was previously, uh, basically when someone has a, a change in their pay rate or anything along those lines, usually CBA increase, anything like that. Uh, that has to be signed off and approved by the Personnel Board. Uh, probably, I think it was May two thousand nineteen, uh, you guys had uh, delegated it to the, uh, to David. And with David no longer here, we just need an updated vote if you want to delegate that to uh, Peter or the current town administrator. Previously, it was going in front of the board, so if anyone, if we had, for, for example, forgotten to have a change of status form signed, like, for example, I forgot to create one for Tanya, so hopefully, she can get her, get her paid. Uh, we wouldn't be able to get her paid until following the next meeting, so. Whereas if you were, if you were to delegate it, we'll be able to get that paperwork signed by Peter first thing tomorrow morning, so it's out of the way.
Tim, you're not gonna do it by name. You're just gonna make it like town administrator, right?
Yes, that, that would be the recommendation from the town.
Be that position, yeah.
Yeah.
So George, you know when we usually appoint somebody, and then the next meeting, we have a change of status form, or when somebody like, uh,
Well, I think I got it now, Lisa.
Yeah, so that's all that is.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'm fine with it.
So did I, did I make that motion?
Yeah.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Slakman Grunwald?
Yes.
Slakman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Slakman Matthews?
Yes. All right, and finally, um, so the Cemetery Cemetery Commission has, um, recommended that we give, uh, this, the Cemetery Sexton, uh, Mr. Daisy, a one dollar, uh, per hour increase effective, uh, July first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, to go ahead with this.
Um, I, I'll just throw my two cents out there. I don't think it needs us to approve it. I think they have to put it in the budget because it's for next year. It's for, I think it's for next year, FY twenty-two.
It is, but the board has to set the pay rate for a seasonal employee, so it's either, you're gonna have to vote it sooner or later, either now or.
I should have said that. So it's really, it's setting what the minimum wage is, right?
For that position.
But is it minimum, or is it, he wants a dollar?
It'll be a dollar above minimum wage. You previously set it to minimum wage. Now you, they're looking for a dollar more than that.
All right. And there's money in their budget for that?
Uh, it would be part of next year's budget.
Uh, motion to accept that.
Second, I'm so confused.
Dollar raise is what I'm.
Yeah, it would, it would be effective July first.
I, I don't have an issue with giving somebody a raise, but right now, what we're doing is giving somebody a raise for next year, right?
Right. I think, I think Mike is just looking for.
Why wouldn't he just put it in the budget for next year? Why are we voting on some, because now it's not gonna, it just doesn't make sense to me, so I'm gonna abstain from voting on it.
Is it, wait, wait a minute, let's, is it, is this for next year?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be effective July first, twenty-twenty-one. They're just looking for guidance, whether, what rate they should be putting in for the, for their budget request.
I think consensus is put it in. I think that's a consensus. But I don't.
I think we need to say that it's for next fiscal year.
It does.
It does.
It does, okay.
Well, it said that it's, it's effective July first, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, okay.
I said, I think that one thing to know, it says at present, the rate of pay in this position is tied to the state minimum wage, so is that why, I think that's why there needs to be a vote here, right, to go up on that.
Well, you could always wait and approve it later on. And I can just let Mike know that the consensus is that we're fine with using the higher pay rate.
Yeah, and just put it in the budget, because we have to approve the budgets anyway.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we can do it that way, then.
All right, then I think I am all set with Personnel Board.
Are we good?
We are. I just have one little update from under Old Business. Um, what was it? Uh, town meeting signs. We actually purchased those the other day. They're sitting out in the hallway, I believe.
Some.
Uh, so just gotta put them together. Uh, and Peter, like Peter said, the trash recycling contract is, he's working on the RFP for that. Um, and transfer station cameras as well, so that's all I got.
Signs, him on the signs, I talked to the other Tim. He's gonna get some bags of sand from the highway.
Jeff had said he'd, he'd obtained those, so we're good on that forefront as well.
Awesome. Um, just, everybody read your email. There was an email today, um, from Tim, sent to everybody from the Finance Committee. So we might just want to read that over, because it's gonna be on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Please.
What is the issue with the, uh, hiring policy?
Uh, that's something that I've been trying to put together for probably the better part of two months. I have not been able to fully gather it to get it ready, so.
He's been busy. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slakman Matthews?
Yes.
Slakman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Slakman Pacheco.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Toodles, everybody. I'll, I'll let everybody know how I make out.